Order, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, meeting of the Ojai City Council, closed session. Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston. James, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Please stand, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. And we do have two public comments. And just a reminder, public comments are for a closed session, pertain to the closed session item. First, we have Randy Haney and then Wendy Lerner.
Counsel, James, Matt. So what's the topic of the closed session? Because it wasn't posted.
I have a point of order. I'm sorry, just because I don't know the answer to this question. Do we need to approve the agenda?
Normally, it should be listed.
Yes.
Yeah, we should approve the agenda.
And when would that approval of the agenda be?
We should approve the agenda before we take public comment on the items on the agenda, or the one item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion that we move the closed session to the open session. I feel that there, for many reasons, that this should be an open session. And I think that we always have a choice as to whether to have an open or closed session. And I think that the default to a closed session in most instances is probably an overcorrection and leads us to trouble. So I would, for that reason, I also, I think that there are problems with how this was agendized. But I'm happy to take that up in the actual motion, in the actual discussion itself. But I do want to make that motion to bring a closed session into open session. Transparency is always the better idea.
I would support that. I can give my reasons later.
Okay. Counsel, any comments?
So we have a motion and a second to shift the item scheduled for closed session to open session, which would need to be agendized on a future meeting, of course, which could be done. Motion second, the staff recommends considering the matter in closed session and can discuss those, the basis for that in closed session. With that, we're available to answer any questions. It's difficult to speak in the abstract.
Question? I did not realize that meant that we couldn't make it an open session tonight. What's the reason?
It's not listed as an item for open session tonight. It's listed as a closed session item. It can be heard as an open session item, but have to be shifted to a future meeting, which could be either a special meeting within 24 hours, or adjourn this meeting within five days. No, but we're changing the agenda. So within 24 hours, or at a regular meeting, of course, would be another option.
The unfortunate thing is that, it's my understanding, there could be a time constraint that's effective even today. Is that correct?
There is a time constraint, and we're happy to discuss that further in closed session. I will note the other option that's always available to the council is to begin a matter in closed session and then decide after further debate whether to hear the matter, whether to end the closed session discussion and shift it to open session. That's also always on the table as an option.
Okay.
Rachel?
That seems like a reasonable option to me.
Yeah.
Andy?
I hate to postpone.
I also, I also disagree that open session is always the best option, or they wouldn't have a closed session. And there are reasons that the law allows us to go into closed session. And my understanding is that our legal advisor is telling us that this is one of those circumstances. So I would follow his advice and discuss things closed session, and if we need to go into open session, or we want to discuss that at that point in time, we can do that.
I have another comment. I'm sorry, comment. I would agree with Rachel and Andy. I think that it's important to listen to our city attorney and that their, that our city can be jeopardized or at risk at times in terms of litigation. So it's really important that we are able to do that. Leslie?
I would just want to correct Councilman Whitman. I did not say that there was never an occasion for closed session, and in fact, I do believe there are occasions for closed session. I do not believe that this is an occasion for closed session. And I would hearken everyone to take a look at the school board and these suits that are coming and being filed against the attorneys involved in that particular decisions around closed sessions. That having been said, it is, of course, the decision of the council to vote on whether or not we do. I would say, I do have a point, a question for city attorney. If we were to go into closed session and decide to adjourn and come back into open session, would we be able to do that today?
No, I think the item would have to be listed for an open session item. But we could, what we would do, if that were the council's choice, is come out and report that we would be going to open session with a date, if we've agreed upon a date, or a date to be determined if not yet agreed. And we would report out what that open session item would be. So we'd come out with some report today, if that were the council majority's direction. But we wouldn't be able to have that discussion today because we didn't agendize it as open session. It'd have to be come back.
Okay. I have some follow-up questions to that. This is time sensitive. We were given a month, and it is today that this decision is due. So I would say that in some ways, our hands have been bound and/or the decision that will come has been made for us. So I have deep concerns about why we are discussing it on a deadline day and did not discuss it before. I don't know what the ramifications of that are, but it seems to me it'd be hard to find a good reason for having done that. There might be one. So I would also point out that the way that this was agendized, well, number one, that there was no notice of comments, which I realize, according to James, is standard procedure. And I remember the first time I went into closed session and I didn't see that on here, I asked you about it. And I think that the only time it has been done is a year ago, March, where it was actually, closed sessions actually were on a closed agenda. So we might want to consider that as well. I myself, being a council member, did not realize that it was inherent or, you know, in the actual, that it didn't need to be actually written out. There would be no way who, someone who didn't know the process would assume that that was the case. Probably, I don't know. So I did want to also speak to the particular agendize, the codes that these were agendized under. So one is D2, and it says, "A point has been reached where, in the opinion of the city council and advice of its legal council, based on the below-described existing facts and circumstances, there is a significant exposure to litigation against the city." So there are no below-described existing facts and circumstances. What instead there is, is something that takes the need to do that, or the requirement to do that, by citing E1, which says, "Facts and circumstances that might result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs." So I see the maneuver there, which is simply to say that we are going to notice it under D2, and then we are going to add E1 to say that we actually, that the facts and circumstances are not yet known to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. And that is the clause that I would say is not true. I believe we do know what the, what the facts and circumstances are, to a great extent. I certainly know. I have a feeling that you know. So I would say that this is, not only does it lack transparency, it lacks truth. And, but I see the maneuver here. And so the things that concern me most are that I believe that this is done so that we can go into closed session. But I believe that it once again shows a complete and utter lack of transparency on this council by the way that it was agendized, which has got us into an immense amount of trouble and strife already. And once again, I think I'm really concerned that the deadline to respond is today. That, to me, seems, how does that work if we have to re-agendize if we go into open session? Does that force our hand not to go into open session? Well, we now have two choices. Either we miss the deadline, or we stay in closed session. And both of those are untenable to me. So that is the comment that I wished to make about this particular process. That having been said, the vote can be taken.
Mayor and counsel, if I may briefly. As to the deadline, which was imposed by an outside actor without any basis in law, the council very much has the power to ask for an extension. There's no statutory provision governing said deadline. We always have the right to ask for more time. And I would expect that the other side would be reasonable in giving more time, especially if the additional time was to allow an open session discussion of the matter. That would strike me as unlikely for them to refuse to that additional time for that purpose.
Could I respond to that?
Second, the comment regarding the listing of the agenda item on closed session, the mayor called a special meeting is allowed by state law, with my advice and counsel. The agendized item is listed exactly as allowed by the Brown Act. The provisions that are quoted, 549, 56.9, E1, and 549, 56.9, D2, are expressly as stated in the Brown Act's provisions, which specifies that the city need not disclose facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against a local agency, but which the local agency believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. I may be aware of those facts and circumstances. In part, I am not a potential plaintiff. I would never sue the city, never will.
No, I'm not saying.
And I'm not a potential plaintiff. So that, my knowledge, is irrelevant to whether or not that closed session is a valid closed session exemption.
But you have had.
The question is whether the potential plaintiffs may or may not be aware of the facts. And my belief, wholeheartedly, is that the potential plaintiff at issue is not aware of all the facts and circumstances. They may be aware of some, based on newspaper reporting. But newspaper reporting is not verified information, particularly when the newspaper reporting is often, as has been the case, editorial commentary, not verified facts and circumstances. There is a situation, there is the reality that a number of the facts and circumstances at issue are not known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. There are more than one potential plaintiff. There's the one we have in our minds. There are a number of other potential plaintiffs, most of whom are not aware of the circumstances. So that allows the council, if approved by the majority, to go into closed session on this item. Thank you.
And I would respond to that in various ways. The first, of course, being that to say that they don't know all the facts is to give yourself an immense amount of room to wiggle. Are you aware, you are aware, are you aware that, have you spoken with the plaintiffs?
I have spoken with one potential plaintiff.
You have spoken with one potential plaintiff?
There are other potential plaintiffs.
Who are the other, how would you know?
I will not discuss that in detail without direct permission of the majority of council.
And we do have a motion and a second. Can we go ahead and vote on that?
Well, I'm not actually through with the discussion. So, you know, until we actually call the vote, the discussion is still live. And so I do have, I can't stress to you enough how upsetting and concerning this is to me. So while I assume you would like to move forward, I understand you would like to move forward. This is tantamount to good governance, which is transparency. And I feel that we're not having it here. And I feel that there are arguments or responses that need to be made to the city attorney. And so I would like the room to make them. So with that having been said.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we limit the time because we do need to get on city business. And I understand where you're coming from, and yet we need to get on to business. So it's.
This is the business.
Please don't interrupt me. It's 5:16. I'd like to make a motion that we spend another five minutes on this and then vote on favor.
Aye.
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 I wanted to hear from the public first.
Well, we will, but.
I mean, before I vote on this.
Can I ask a question?
And that's usually what we do.
To councilmember Rule.
Of course.
Not before we prove the agenda, though, Madam Protem.
Okay.
So not with cross-talking, but is it, is it possible for us to discuss this and kind of go in-depth with it as we're discussing whether, like, in a closed session, with the intention of talking about how to promote transparency in an open session? Like, would you be comfortable with having this dialogue in a very real, honest way in closed session with that understanding that we, that we make moves to make this more transparent?
I am concerned with what has occurred as much as I am concerned with what is yet to occur. So if we are indeed to discuss, you know, how we will move forward, that would not satisfy me. I believe that this is a very serious plaintiff and that we need, we need to make, we need to make the city whole by being transparent on this.
We do have a motion, which was approved with the majority of council.
We were still discussing it, so.
No, but to spend five more minutes on this discussion and then take public comment. So that would get to 5:23, so.
I will make a comment on that motion. Limiting discussion about such an important item has gotten us to this problem. This is the time and the place to discuss this. I appreciate, this is the council business. And the assertion that this is not the council business is exactly why we are here where we are, why we are having a closed session to go deal with council business. Mr. Summers, I believe that you do, in fact, know what the plaintiffs, the facts and circumstances that the plaintiff is aware of. Now, I agree, there may be other plaintiffs around based on, you know, the fact egregious violations have concentric circles and keep going outward. But the plaintiff right now, the one that we are going to miss the deadline for, we know, we know what the facts and circumstances, we know what they know. And I think you do, too, because you requested an official document. So, and we're denied that. So my guess is that your discussion with them, you do have all of the facts and circumstances. So I believe, once again, I believe that to be disingenuous. That having been said, when there are three votes that, you know, want to, once again, put this behind closed doors, there's not much I can do about it, except for to, as we say, call it out and attempt to put some light on this situation. And so that is what I have done. The council will vote. Let's keep in mind that my objections are, I believe that this was agendized disingenuously, that the mayor has called to stop conversation around this issue. That is the whole reason we have had these problems since the day we sat down here. And yet we continue with it. And as far as getting, once again, I'm sorry, city attorney, but as far as asking after the fact for an extension, that seems to me to be, I don't know. Why wouldn't you have asked for it first? Why wouldn't we have done this within the months' time that we had? But that having been said, you know, they very well may give us an extension. I know that any other place where you come in late and you ask for an extension, it's a 50-50 at best.
Can I, can I say something? So I just want to say something, and that is that if I vote for us to go into closed session, it's because I don't have an outside counsel. I haven't talked to any other attorneys about this. I've had a brief conversation with our city attorney. And so I don't know the plaintiff, I don't know what we're talking about. I mean, I know just a little bit about it, as much as I can know, without consulting with an attorney, who is our city attorney. And, and I think that there are ways that we can do that if all of us are, I mean, I feel the same way you do about wanting transparency and wanting things to come out into the open and to be really honest, to workshop things with the public. But before I'm, I'm open to just having that conversation with the public, I'm a little hesitant because I don't know all the facts. And we can't know all the facts as one body without going into closed session.
Well, we could. We could. It's a choice. It's always a choice. It is always a choice to go into closed session.
Suzan?
It's my understanding that we cannot go into open session tonight. And I also don't know all the facts. So my conservative, okay, a substitute motion would be to go into closed session with the understanding that we have the option of delaying this to open session, if we so decide in the closed session, and that we will do everything possible to prevent this type of scenario in the future. Because the public is very aware of this closed session. I've had numerous questions, and I haven't been able to tell them what it's about. And that puts us all in a awkward.
It's now, it's.
I have one final question. We made a motion.
I would second, I would second Suz's motion to go into closed session to discuss how we, to discuss some of the facts and talk about how we could bring this into an open session. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. It's now 5:23, and we did make a motion to spend five more minutes.
I want to make one quick statement, since I haven't been talking. And that is that I don't know what the facts are. So I would very much like to hear them from legal counsel, who thinks that it's best that we hear that in a closed session.
I would agree with that.
I have one final.
We have that option.
Yeah, one final point, if I could.
Yeah, let's wrap it up.
The test is not whether or not we know it. The test is whether the plaintiff knows it, just to be clear about that. The question is not whether we know it. The idea is to bring it so that we do know it in open session, just so we're very clear about that. The code says the plaintiff. It does not say the council. So that's first. And if it had been agendized properly, and it would have been there, and you would know about it. That having been said.
We have a motion, we have a motion to go to closed session. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're talking about the motion to go into closed session with the option, if we so decide, that we can postpone into an open session on another day. I would like that to be part, that's.
If council decides.
If the council decides.
Yeah, but I think that Matt explained earlier that we always have that option.
It is always an option, yes.
It's always an option when we go into closed session to decide, okay, we should hold this discussion in front of the public. It's always the option.
I just felt better making it part of my motion so the public understands.
All right, the motion passed. We'll move to public comment. First, Randy Haney.
Madam Mayor.
It would be nice if I voted.
I don't think I heard Councilmember Rule's vote.
I didn't hear.
That is a no, thank you.
Okay. First, we have Randy Haney, then Wendy Lerner, and then John Drucker.
You guys asked me earlier if I missed this. Okay, so my question, and I don't know who can answer it. Mayor, you stated that the public comment is only about what's in closed session. Yet there's nothing on the agenda that tells me what's in closed session, so how could I comment on something that I don't know about? So I think there's two, I think there's a misunderstanding here. Public comment is the opportunity for any individual in this community to come forward. I think you guys have dissected public comment for the last two months, and you came to the conclusion that you're going to give the first 30 minutes of each council session. You didn't, I didn't hear a declaration as to closed versus open, but I'm going to assume, on my part, that public comments are the first 30 minutes of any. That's one thing. The second thing is, would be if the closed session had something that I could, could talk to, because I knew what the topic was, then I'd be prepared to talk to that. I'm not going to argue with anyone tonight. If the city attorney says that, the way you explained closed session, that the only public comments tonight can be on a closed session item, that no one knows what it is, then I'll leave and come back at another date. But I think you're wrong in your assumption here. So could someone please let me know where I stand?
Mayor and counsel, happy to answer the question desired. So the council did decide that the first 30 minutes of, after presentations of every meeting, would be general public comment. But that's for regular meetings. Tonight's a special meeting. So tonight, the public comment is just on the item on the agenda, which is the closed session item is listed regarding anticipated litigation. So there is no detail, absolutely. But the public comment could, in part, raise concerns regarding what I think both folks can figure out, or articulate the idea that matters should be heard in open session, or be a comment on the closed session agenda itself.
All right, so again, like I said, I really don't want to get into a debate here. I just want some clarity.
But just to confirm, it's been that way for a long time, where closed sessions.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I sat there for eight years, right up there, and never, ever had this conversation about public comment and when they can speak and what they can speak to. So I'm sorry, this is not everyday practice that you're assuming that we've done. It isn't, in my recollection. So I don't want to get into that tit-for-tat. I don't think that's worthy of our time, okay? You can, right now, as the majority of council members, state, we will take public comments on anything that anyone here would like to speak to. And three of you can say yes, and we can have three minutes of your valuable time. So someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion because there's only three people.
And three people say yes, and let's move on.
I'll second the motion.
I'll third it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
The motion is to.
Allow Randy to speak.
And just, just some.
Randy can have three minutes, sure.
And just some clarity, Mr. City Attorney. From what I understand, it has been closed session. That is the norm, that.
The distinction isn't closed session. The distinction is regular meeting versus special meeting. We've always taken general public comment on items not on the agenda at a regular meeting, as we must, per the Brown Act. At special meetings, the city has historically not taken public comment on items not on the agenda. But absolutely, the council majority could choose to take public comment.
And then I would just add one more thing to this, just so that we have clarity, just for your benefits, okay? Maybe under public comment, you state the rule. Public comment in closed sessions are only on closed session item. If I had read that, I'd be at home having dinner and probably watching ESPN basketball or something. But I didn't read that, and in my eight years on council, I never had this discussion. So my assumption was, public comment. I came here prepared to ask you five, and the city attorney, five questions. But I'm also asking, not just for me, for three minutes in public comments, I'm asking for anyone that has the ability to speak on public comment right now pertaining to anything they would like to for three minutes.
Okay. Well, we had a motion. Do you want to repeat?
We voted. We passed that.
Okay. Did we pass it?
We passed it. We voted.
Did we vote? We didn't vote. We didn't vote. I got, all in favor.
Can we repeat the motion?
And I just want to clarify that we're voting for tonight. So if we had a closed session and 30 people showed up to speak, I don't think I would want to take that if it kept us from getting into our closed session.
So my question would be to city attorney, are we deciding that, 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 are we, is this something that's in the Brown Act? Or are we relying upon the ways that we have done this in the past, therefore, we will do this in the future? So for instance, to say, "We did not differentiate 30 minutes between a closed session or an open session." We didn't say, "Only for closed session." So my question to you is legally, is there something that says we would need to do that for closed session as well? Or if it hadn't been precedent in the way that we have done things, would it naturally have also applied to all sessions, whether they be open or closed?
So again, the distinction is not closed or open session. The distinction is regular meeting or special meeting. Hold on. Regular meeting is the second and fourth Tuesdays at 6:00 PM. At those meetings. At those meetings, the Brown Act requires that we take general public comment on any item not on the agenda, as we do. And we've changed, we had the whole debate over how, but we've always done that. Brown Act clearly requires that. The Brown Act does not require general public comment at special meetings, which are meetings at any other day other than Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesdays. So we're now, today, we're on the third Tuesday, so it's a special meeting. We do not have to take general public comment. We have not historically, and we do not have to, because the Brown Act does not require it. It does not, however, prohibit it, so council could choose, as I think we're about to do, to take general public comment.
Great, thank you. All right. We have a motion, and we have a second, to take public comment.
I want to amend the motion to include a, that we include for future special meetings, the statement that Mr. Haney had suggested would have avoided this long discussion we've had. So if, if we could add that to the motion.
But one more point, I hate to prolong this, but there are special meetings called on different, on various topics, as opposed to special meetings for a closed session. You know, for example, we might have a special meeting on the ATP or housing.
The language should be for a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
When we have a special meeting, the public comment section of the agenda should say that public comment for a special meeting is limited to the topic of the special meeting.
Okay, now, a friendly amendment would be something like barring emergencies, or barring special circum, you know, it's hard to say that, but the council always has the option, correct? If there's something unusual, to override whatever we put on here?
Within certain limits, yes. If I could make a suggestion, make a decision for tonight, not for the future.
All right, all right. We have a motion.
Make a decision for the future by looking at the protocols. My suggestion would be to make a decision for tonight and move from there.
Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, we have a motion to take general public comment tonight. We have a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Randy.
Wow, thank you. And, and again, it's, it's, you know what I recognize is, there's a lot of you that are new. And so clarifying all of these rules, I think, is important. And as they come up, you just have to have these frank discussions. So I know it's time consuming, and I know it's sometime, it can be arduous, might be the word, but, but you know what? You'll get through it. I just know it. So, real quick, February 14th, at the council meeting, the mayor was accused of ethical violations and, you know, morality problems and all other stuff. I'm not going to state it. I don't think I have to. After the public comments were taken, the mayor asked the city attorney to clarify if she had broken any laws. And in the past, the city attorney had usually, on that request regarding those items, had said you hadn't. And then on February 14th, you said you had. So I have a couple of questions. And correct me if I'm mad, if you have to. The Brown Act violation was one of them, and the attorney-client information violation was another, that you stated that the mayor had did something wrong, broken a law, I guess, okay? So I think the public, no one in that moment, none of you in that moment, and even the mayor, which I would have thought she would have wanted to, have a better understanding of what each one of those were and what actually occurred. How did that, what did she or he or anyone do that did that violation? There was no hand raised. So I don't know if everyone heard it, or if it just, in the moment, just went past everyone's thought process, which is fine. But I think we need to understand that. The mayor needs to understand it, the council needs to understand it, the community needs to understand it, what those, what the definitions of each of those are and what the violations were. And I think that, I think the city attorney needs to do that in, you know, as soon as he possibly can. The second thing that, that happened was, if we had a clear understanding of what the, what the rule was or the law was and what was broken, then we'd have, then the council could raise their hand and ask the next pertinent question. What do I, as a council person, have to do? What do I, as an individual citizen, have to do or can do? And so without a clear understanding of what occurred, I can't ask that question. So again, you need clarity of what the violation was, and then two, you can proceed, because you, as a council, have to make some decisions regarding this matter. The next thing is, what do we, as citizens, have? What are our rights?
Thank you, Randy.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I finish?
Take, yeah, 10 seconds, 15 seconds?
I just have two more after this.
It's a three-minute rule.
It is a three-minute.
We're okay, we're okay.
That's the rule.
The council can override it.
So the, the next question is, what's our role in this? And I think that would be another question to the city attorney. He should be able to respond to that. And then...
Okay, Randy, can you wrap it up?
This is...
It is a three-minute rule, and I agree, out of fairness.
Like you said, I could be at home eating dinner.
It's a three-minute rule.
As the last one, sir, the last question is actually to the city attorney. If you have recognized that a city official has broken a law, what is your role?
Okay, thank you, Randy. Next, we have Wendy Lerner, and then John Drucker. Are there any more card, speaker cards?
I think we've got them all ready.
Okay, thank you.
E1 appears to be triggered only for purposes of D2, D2 or 3. Now, D3 is based, is saying that, it's my understanding, it's saying that litigation is considered pending for purposes of going into closed session, based on existing, existing facts and circumstances the city council is meeting, only to decide whether a closed section, session is authorized pursuant to paragraph 2. So it seems to me paragraph 3 has to come before paragraph 2. So the only thing you can decide tonight in closed session is whether or not this should be decided in open session or closed session. So I hope that you limit what happens in closed session to that item only. Now, you can go look up 54956.9, D2 or 3, and all of those in the Brown Act. I also wanted to say, say that I think I've been misled by the city council in a, in a question I had today, because it's obvious that the plaintiff knows who he or she is in this case, and yet I was told that they did not know who they were. Now, that has nothing to do with facts and circumstances, but just the identification of the person. So those are all separate categories, and I think that the identification of the aggrieved party should be public, so that we could know that before we came tonight. Also, I wanted to say, Rachel, you could have abstained. You know, you have that option when you're confused about whether, that you hadn't conferred with anybody but the city, but the city council, and you might have wanted to do that with someone else. Considering the possible Brown Act violations in previous closed sessions, I trust you will be scrupulous in playing by the cards, by the rules tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, we have John Drucker.
You're welcome, Nancy.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to compliment Ms. Lerner on the fact that despite not being a lawyer, that she can read the English language quite well, and I, I would urge you all to engage that faculty that you're blessed with. First, regarding subsection E1, it's regarding facts and circumstances that might, might, might result in litigation. It's not, does, does the plaintiff agree with my version of the facts? It's whether the plaintiff has facts and circumstances known to him, she, or it that might lead to litigation. And I think the fact of that matter is that this plaintiff knows very well what facts might lead to litigation, and that is why you noticed it under section D2, because you're saying that the plaintiff has presented a significant exposure to litigation. I don't see how you can have the two operating at the same time. Next, I would just say that I would like to read to you from the Attorney General's handbook on the Brown Act. Attorney General, why keep, the question is to why keep the name of the plaintiff or the nature of the claim secret? Since closed sessions are an exception to open meeting requirements, the authority for such sessions has been narrowly construed. The law evinces a strong bias in favor of open meetings, and court decisions and opinions of this office have buttressed that legislative intent. The fact that material may be sensitive, embarrassing, or controversial does not justify application of a closed session unless it is authorized by some specific exception. Rather, in many circumstances, these very characteristics may be further evidence of the need for public scrutiny and participation in discussing such matters. So for both of those reasons, I think that if you go into closed session, which seems like you are, you should come out and tell everyone who the plaintiff is and what the nature of the claim is. Beyond that, I think that the parties who are directly responsible for this significant exposure to litigation should recuse themselves on any vote, whether in open session or in closed session. And thirdly, I would, I would ask the council, given its past history in closed sessions, that even this closed session should be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Excuse me, I have a question for Mr. Drucker.
Your attorney?
Boys, I have a question.
We shouldn't be opening up the meeting for you to question your attorney.
Excuse me, point of privilege, Councilman Whitman does not have the right to interrupt me. Neither does he have the right to make a statement to me, telling me what is proper and what is not. But, but thank you very, you do not, the county, the city attorney may.
I'd like to hear from the city attorney, please.
The council can permit a question by a council member to her lawyer. The council could also choose not to do so.
How did, under what legal authority, excuse me, under what legal authority could this council refuse me asking a question in a general comment? Could you, I want you to cite that to me, please.
The Brown Act allows for brief responses to questions, to questions or comments made in a general public comment. Historically, we've often allowed that. The council's also the control, through the majority, of order within the meeting, and can decide that the matter, that such questions, particularly to your lawyer, are out of order. I look to the majority.
I would say, where is your legal authority for that? I have read the Brown Act, and all I see is that questions of, in general comment, are allowed. There's nothing that says that, number one, the council can vote not to allow that to happen, or, number two, that there's some special consideration between a speaker and a council member that would enable that not to happen. I, I don't know, once again, can you show me where that is? I think that there is a lot of assumptions that go on here, and to Randy's point, we are all new at this. We all need clarification, and while we would like to march along quickly and efficiently, none of us know the Brown Act. None of us. It, it's something that needs clarification out in the open. So this, this point of, of, we don't have time for this, we need to work through every one of these confusing issues. I'm sorry.
Could we hear from the city attorney, please?
I'm happy to provide a citation. I'll need a moment to look it up. Regarding the point, I've stated that there's a opportunity to have a brief general response to public comments. It is, as we have done, I would suggest, in the interest of time, that the council majority simply provide direction.
Okay. All in favor, who's in favor of not allowing a question? Wait just a second. In favor of not allowing a question?
I think we should go into closed session, is what I think.
Okay. I'm in, I'm in favor of that.
I'm in favor of allowing a comment that could have been completed by now.
We need a yes or no?
I mean, I'm okay with a comment.
Okay. All right. Quick question?
My question is this, and this was sent to me. When, and this is from the Brown Act, where the agency receives a claim or other written communication threatening litigation, reference to the claim or communication must be publicly stated on the agenda or announced, and the claim or 23 communication must be available for public inspection pursuant to section 54957.5. Is that anything that you referenced in your discussion here?
I'm not sure I did, but I certainly agree with that as a general proposition. And as I mentioned before, the predilection to openness and transparency is absolutely essential. So when given the choice between hiding and sharing, I would hope that this council opts in favor of sharing.
Okay, thank you. Weston, any comments on Zoom?
No raised hands, but I'd like to take the opportunity to ask those attending on Zoom to raise their hand now if they'd like to speak. Give it a few seconds. Okay. Oh, we have Renee. Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening, council, and I would like to just affirm the positive notion that there are items where we could learn from and all become better educated when anybody is threatening or making cases for litigation, that this matter be discussed publicly and openly, so we can all better understand how to avoid getting into these situations. So I would hope, if this is to be discussed tonight in closed session, that we can all learn from it and learn what the outcome is, and if there is any way who the person is and why this is coming about, so we can avoid getting into these situations in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else, Weston?
No more raised hands, Mayor.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, we'll hand it over to you.
With that, the council will go into closed session to consider, consult with the legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that might result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. I do not yet know if there will be reportable action.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move to closed session. Thank you all for being here.
And I...